Good afternoon, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to open just with a couple of housekeeping notes before we get started. So unfortunately, the mayor, Mayor Bassett, has had a bout of diverticulitis, which landed him in the hospital, and we're hoping that he will be discharged tomorrow. He sends his regrets at not being able to be at tonight's meeting, but he needs to get the rest in the hospital, and I saw him both, saw him yesterday, and he's looking well, and I think he'll be up tomorrow, we hope. Hope so, okay. Thank you very much. So that's why, as Deputy Mayor, that's why I'm chairing the meeting this evening. The second thing I'd like to do is we have a series of personnel anniversaries for June, and I would like to read them out, just because these are really the people who make our village go. They keep us safe, they pay the bills, they make sure that the water comes on and when we use it, has someplace to go. So these are really the people who are Rhinebeck, who are the Rhinebeck Village. So I'll read them out. Motor Equipment Operator, Tom Johnson, 18 years of service. Police Officer, Brian Reeve, 18 years of service. Superintendent of Public Works and Code Enforcement Officer, John Fenton, four years of service. Police Clerk Danielle Rector, 10 years of service. Treasurer Karen McLaughlin, four years of service. Water Treatment Plant Operator, Tony Fata, 18 years of service. And here with us, Village Clerk, Pat Coon, 22 years of service. So without them, we are nothing. The first, next order of business I'd like to get into is we have a public hearing for vehicle and traffic on the agenda. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the vehicle and traffic hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. So the nature of this, the nature of this code change is to create a loading zone on, excuse me, a loading zone on the east side of West Market Street. So I'm sure I got that right. Basically, this is the side which market and the parking lot for Upstate Film are on, Montgomery Road. It's that side, it's not the side where the bicycle store, the tailor, Bunn's, and the new building is going at.
You mean Garden Street?
Garden Street.
Is it Garden Street?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, actually, I missed right, I'm sorry, start again. The name of the street is Garden Street, it is on the east side, the location is from West Market to the cul-de-sac. Sorry about that. So the purpose here, the village is tight for loading zones. It turns out that trucks have been using this somewhat, so we'd like to make it formalized, and with that formalization, we would create a 30-minute time limit for the trucks to use the space, and also, it would give us a chance to shoo trucks that are using up regular parking spaces to an actual designated loading zone. So that's the twin purposes of this public hearing. So I can start with the board, do you have any comment? Board members?
Deputy Mayor, the only thing I'd like, and this is just administrative, when we create the new section, which is 109-54 Schedule 20, our existing general code, our E-code, has three columns, the name of the street, the side, and location. We don't have a fourth column for time limit, so we just have to be certain that-
They'll do it exactly as I send it to them.
Oh, they'll create a fourth column? Okay. Thank you. And then- Look, we have the 30 minutes.
Now, Pat, can I take comments from the public or do I have to create a public? Okay. So at this time, we're allowing comments from the public about this. If you can come up and state your name and-
Sure. Piper Woods, I manage Montgomery Road.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Come up to the mic.
I really just had, it's pretty narrow, as most people probably know, Garden Street's pretty narrow. I'm not even sure, I mean, if it's two lanes, it's tight, real tight. I would've said it's like one and a half lanes, the width itself, and I was just, I'm super excited you guys were taking a look at this, because it's definitely needed, you know, a loading area. Right now, if I believe the east side, you can't park on it at all, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And my concern, I guess, is that, so if a truck or tractor-trailer is parked there, I'm just concerned about traffic flow. There's still then like one lane of traffic, I'm guessing, and if you come from, I guess, West Market, down to, I guess, the edge of the Star Building property, it's wider, you know, and then when you get to my property, there's sidewalk that is, that's basically on, you know, just off of my property. So I'm mostly concerned about, I guess, if you run this loading zone all the way through to the Delamater property, then I'm just thinking about the width, basically, between the sidewalk and Bunn's or, you know, the entrance to Garden Street. I'm curious to know how, why, like this loading, whatever this, I assume like, I mean, it's getting used now, so I totally understand, like, you wanting to make it official and legal and stuff like that, but I'm just, I don't know, I'm just asking the questions because of the width and stuff like that, and the lack of the width in front of my property.
Sure. So I can answer, I think, this question partially. I know that with a prior trustee and the mayor were hunting for loading zones within the village, and part of that group included the police chief, and I would assume potentially a consultation with Chief Amy. So they know where this is going, they took a look, they said this would be acceptable for traffic flow, emergency traffic flow. So we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have created it without a sign-off from those guys that would be acceptable. Now, we'll mean that, I mean, I go down that street, when the trucks are there, we're gonna, people are gonna creep down the street, because it's gonna be narrow, but-
Yeah, there's only one, like, one, you know, way, so if there's people, if there's someone, you know, parked there, you still have to maneuver your way with the tube flow. And then, I mean, so right now, if people, people, if a tractor-trailer has to access Garden Street, like, if they have to back, back into the Hell Food Store, if you will, the way that they access that is by driving over the sidewalk that, you know, that's right in front of my property to access that street, to access that area.
Right.
That's the only way that they can make the turn, because it's so narrow.
It's so narrow, sure.
So I'm just, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm just asking the questions, because if it's-
Sure, I mean, obviously, that, I mean, that's-
And are you concerned that how, if it's a loading zone, anyone can park there, correct? Is that my understanding?
No. No, no, it's for loading and unloading only.
Right, I know, but 30 minutes, so someone running into Bunn's to pick up their burgers or Abby's or whatever.
No, 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 it's commercial.
No.
It's commercial, it's for commercial use.
It's a commercial loading zone.
Yeah. A loading zone is not, I mean, my understanding of a loading zone, it's not for individual use, it's for commercial use.
Okay.
And the other thing is, if it, you know, if it needs to be tweaked, then, you know, we'll just, we'll change it, I mean, we're-
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for our list, because, you know, parking is, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna say, clearly, I've got a big building over there, you know, with a lot of activity going on, but we've noticed just, you know, just as, I assume the bagel shop noticed, when I moved in, you know, just more congestion since Garden Street has gotten more developed, so I appreciate you guys taking a look at this. Thank you.
I think, I just want to think I'd say, the comment, usually, those are standing zones for individuals, right? Sometimes you'll see something, they'll say, standing 15 minutes, that's usually for individuals, loading and unloading for-
Will the, will you guys mark the, I assume that we mark with signage, and then will you mark the ground as well, or just the signage?
I don't think we'll put in, because there are a lot of different sized trucks.
Yeah, it's also pretty hot holy over there anyway.
There'll be signage, yeah.
Okay.
It's on the list.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional comments from the floor, from the board here? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the Village and Traffic Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. I would like to make a motion to adopt the addition to section, I'm gonna ask a question here. In the top code, it says 10945, and the bottom, it says 10954. Is that a typo?
No, that's correct.
Came from our attorney.
Came from our attorney? Okay.
It's correct, correct.
All right, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to delete Section 10945, Schedule 11, Parking prohibited at all times, name of street, Garden Street, side, east, location, West Market Street to the cul-de-sac, and make an addition to Section 10954, Schedule 20, loading zone. The name of the street is Garden Street, the side is the east side, location, West Market Street to the cul-de-sac, and there will be a time limit of 30 minutes. And the amendment will take place immediately upon the filing of the law with the Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of Municipal Home Rule Law. So I'd like to make a motion to, do the proper phrasing, to adopt-
To adopt.
To adopt, like, make a motion to adopt this code. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. The next item that we have is a public hearing on some changes to our Ethics Code, and the background for this change is that this is the Ethics Code that we wanted. Back when the Ethics Board was being formed, when the trustee Rossi was being sworn in, we noticed, Cal Urban had noticed that our code was not in align with the state code, which came after our code, and due to a technical filing error with the people who actually published our code, they did not publish it properly. So we're amending the code to say what we originally, originally want. So I'd like first, open the public hearing to amend Ethics Committee, Section 618C.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, any opposed? No. So any comment from the board at this time? Any comment from the public at this time? Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing to amend Ethics Committee, Section 618C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed amendment to Ethics Committee, Section 618C of the Village Code. It will now read in its entirety, "No Ethics Board Member shall be an officer in a political party, no Ethics Board Member shall be employed by the village." So I'd make a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes care of our public hearings. I'd like to move to public comment. I'm gonna ask, Brennan, do you have an official, as our legislator, with a, come on.
Oh, microphone. Page in the air.
Oh, my goodness.
Don't worry, I won't need it all. Good evening.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, things that are going on, well, first of all, I know many of you are probably aware that we lost a member of the Clinton Corners community in the helicopter crash in Manhattan, was a local volunteer fire department member, longtime resident of Clinton, grew up in the area. So we had a moment of silence last night in the legislature, but I thought that the Rhinebeck community would probably want to know that as well. So that's not good. In terms of political things going, or governmental things going on, I shouldn't say political. Last night, in the legislature, we were asked to consider a resolution to approve 3% raises for legislators, county executive, county sheriff, and county comptroller, and county clerk. I voted no. The resolution did pass with a margin of one vote. There were strong feelings on both sides. My feeling was that we had received the resolution 30 days ago without any background in terms of why it was developed, the thought process behind it, and although we were given some information comparing salaries in other counties, it's not super helpful, because of course, every county has a different size, people work different numbers of hours. I also felt that, right now, the county executive, sheriff, and clerk are making more, nearly double the average median household income in Dutchess County, and that frequently refers to more than one person's salary. So again, without a discussion and sort of exploration of those issues, I voted, as your representative, no. But it passed, so you're welcome to tell me what you thought of that. There's more information on my Facebook page. The other thing that we're working on right now is a redistricting resolution was introduced and was set aside. It will be reintroduced again, and this would allow for an independent committee to handle redistricting, instead of it being voted on directly by legislators. And this actually would, is asking for the public to be able to have a vote on this, so there would be a referendum. So I hope that this will go forward, and we'll see, and again, please let me know your thoughts as community members, as, you know, elected officials, please let me know your thoughts on this. The only other major thing that occurred in the last few weeks is I was up in Albany last week advocating for water testing. That would be a state, handled by the state, so it's not a community or legislative issue, but it's very important for communities that are serviced by water sources that serve under 10,000 people. They're not required to do testings for PFOAs and other contaminants right now, and I'd like to see our community protected from that. The other thing that will be coming up, again, as a statewide thing, but again, I will be advocating for our communities, is a point-of-sale well testing law, which means, you know, if the House changed hands, and this is certainly applicable to Rhinebeck as well, the well would be tested, and this would allow sort of folks to gather a wider set of data to, again, check for contaminants and identify potential problem areas. So again, not a directly legislative issue, but I am working on that, because I think it's important for our communities. So as always, if you want to reach me, I'm across the street at home, everyone, I'm on Facebook, give me a call, I'd love to hear from everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll listen to me, but I'm running to Clinton now, sorry.
I would like to point out that we recently received our, just trying to work up here. That the village recently received our annual testing of our village water, and it came back actually quite clean, quite lovely, quite healthy, so some of the issues-
Does that mean it's far here?
Right, yeah, that's what, I want to make sure. And if you're interested in actually looking at the details, there is a link on the, on the village website, if you want to actually take a look for ourselves. And the thing about, I think, PFOAs and such, that's more of a groundwater well contamination issue where you're-
Than what the village has gathered.
Right, than what we-
Yeah, some municipalities have, you know, obviously, their source water is from wells.
From wells, yeah.
No, and some of it in Dutchess County is quite trouble, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we are really-
I'm drinking out of my cap.
I drink, I drink, I drink it every day. So, yeah, we are kind of quite blessed that we have good water here, so, but thank you for that. Are there any additional public comments?
On anything?
On anything, it's public comment?
I think we have a list.
Well, that's actually just, that's really just a list of people to, oh, our guns. You got one?
So that's just, it's just a list of people.
Yeah, because a lot of people just signed in.
Right. Thank you, Pat. All right. Okay, so we've heard from Piper. Okay, the first name I hear, I see on the list, is David Keith. Did I have a public comment?
No, didn't.
Okay, no comment. The, Martha, incredible signature. The second, excuse me, the third person is Martha Gershman from 41 Lorain. Martha?
Look, I wanted to ask something that might be covered in the SDR update, but just to get it on the record. I just wanted to get a status report on the enforcement process, and it's my understanding that quite a few new short-term rentals have popped up on websites and various, you know, places where we can find them. So I wondered to get a sense of what's happening with the new ones, and also with the ones that were found, that were some of the subject of the letter that was sent out.
Right. At this time, I do not have any of that information. I can follow up with John Fenton. He had a death in the family.
Oh, I see.
So he's, yeah, so he's, some of the work that he has backed up, but we will take a look, obviously, we need to, we need to take a look, so.
Okay.
We do not have an update, any update on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Donna?
Please, thank you. Donna Warner, 23 Beach, and good evening, and I really, best wishes to the mayor. It's a pain, can be a painful condition, so I hope he stays well. I don't have really a prepared comment, but in the same vein as the previous speaker, it seems to me that there's a very fluid situation with the STRs in the village right now. So taking a snapshot in January, may look, you know, at proceeding with the list, original list of 38, that's excellent, and I know there was an update in the mayor's message, but this is changing. If you go on the web, go on and take a look at STRs in the village now, there are at least three new ones. They're all unposted, and they are very large, four, five bedrooms, one three-bedroom. So I think it's an ongoing effort, and so I guess my question is, how is this, will this process unfold? I assume if you cited some people in, as of a list in January or February, that this would have to continue, you know, so that everyone is treated equally. I think there are also issues with enforcement of those who are permitted, but who are operating outside of their permit, and some of this, so I don't know if there is a plan for that sequence of enforcement. One is to get, bring everybody in, but what is the plan to continue to enforce, when there's evidence that, online, actually, that the STRs are operating outside of their permit? So I do think, thirdly, just another suggestion, that the village actually post publicly a list of all STRs that have been permitted, so that there is some benchmark for what has been proved versus who knows what, so.
So-
And it's summertime, so there is quite a bit of-
That's the time, and we'll see some more, try around the fair, remember, she been wall.
Yeah.
So just, I'm making it up here, so really, the central question is, how are we gonna do ongoing effort to monitor what comes new, and what does, what comes up new on the sheets? And that's a good question, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, but I'm-
I mean, we can-
Pat, are you gonna give a report?
We can ask these things at the zoning office, we can't, we can't squeeze them. I mean, you know, is, there's a firewall between the policymakers and the zoning board appeals, for obvious reasons, I mean, we're getting political pressure to crack down on this stuff, and we can respectfully ask where he's at and things like that, but-
And you have a wonderful task for-
Sometimes we're crossing the line, I really think we are, so, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, I'm, well, we're asking, she's asking me, how, how is our, how is our officer going about enforcing the code?
Yeah, so that's, that's fine, we can ask him, you know, these things, but we can't.
Can I just, I, I get emails, we have Pat Evans, who's been working with us. Pat is still maintaining and looking at new ones that have cropped up, and he is notifying John Fenton of these new ones. So just so that you know that it's not like it stopped back then, Pat is still looking, and he is notifying John, and John is doing, you know, his due diligence that he needs to do.
And, and I think, by the way, I'm partly raising this, because as you're going forward, considering new regulations, I think that question of enforcement is going to keep coming up, and again, not, and, and it pertains to what you said, there is only so much capacity in the village right now. So if we're going to have regulations, I think we have to address an enforcement capacity that go, that continues, that's continuous in some ways, so I'm simply making, you know, bringing that up.
Sure. So just, just to speak to this directly, so I was in the, over the winter, I was in Key West, Florida. It's not, well, for, you know, Christmas. But what they have down there is, all of the short-term rentals have a plaque on them, just like if you're familiar with the plaques here that say historic home, this one, right, you're pointing at here, it'd be a very similar sized plaque, and it says, there, it says City of Key West, licensed, they call them transient rentals, and it has a number, it has a number on it.
Correct.
And I spoke with John Fenton, and we're gonna look to implement the same system, so that every licensed rental would have a plaque by the front door and a number attached to it. So if somebody walked by, you know, you can think, wow, that's number, you know, two. And then, and then that'll give you, that'll give you some, some access, and it'll make it much more clear which, which are permitted, which aren't, and will help us with the enforcement. So that's being folded in.
So also, be clear, so before John had a family matter, I met with-
Oh, I do, I understand.
Of course, and he had made tremendous progress, remember, went from 38 down to three, and the three were being followed up on very closely, and that was just about a week ago, a day or so before he left. So it's not that he isn't, you know, staying right on top of it, and I think he's taken it as far as he could at that point in time, and I think the next step was some sort of summons to bring some people to court. So he's moving on it, don't, don't think that he's not.
Oh, my, I have no, I am not here in any way to have a complaint about Mr. Fenton and his scope of work. That is not the issue whatsoever. It's what is the capacity that the village will have, because he can't do it all.
Well, he seems to have, he seems to have handled it quite well, quite frankly, and I think it's not growing, there are some new ones, but, you know, we'll, we'll deal with those, I'm sure.
Well, we'll see. Thank you. I think it's growing.
So that, that's the list of anybody signed in, is there anybody else at this point who would like to make a public comment? If I can come up.
This is like one sentence. Linda Christensen. I just want to understand the timeframe for when we think we're going to have a written policy for review and discussion.
Okay, that is, we're gonna have-
Dude, I can cover that now, as far as where we're at today.
Sure, I just to let you know, so in, in the agenda, we were gonna have, there is an STR update, which is going to brand, if you guys are willing, we'll answer the question in this section.
I mean, it's, it's quick, I just met with Christina Paracci at McCave &amp; Mack, and we went over, we had an original draft from the commission that's been, that was edited, you know, up until the fall, after public comment and all the workshops, and then, well, Gary and Rich, our attorney, had a draft, and then you guys had some comments after that. So I met with Christina, we tried to blend all these things together, and we came up with a draft, so she got that to me this morning, and I had maybe one change, so now it would go to these folks, and, you know, for their review, and there's some questions that have, some points that haven't been addressed, you know, or answered, that need to be clarified, and then we would come back and have a public meeting on it.
I understand there's some debate about whether that would be a workshop or a public hearing. Right, so I think one of the-
It depends on what, if they're fond of it, in a way, you know, I mean-
So I think one of the issues that we have is that we would like to get some closure on this. How long until you think you're ready to circulate the, let me see-
She should get it out, like, tomorrow, I would think.
Okay, because what I would like to do, if possible, today, is set a time for a workshop, that workshop session sometime soon, and then hopefully be able to conduct a public, a public hearing at our next Village Board meeting.
Okay, so what I, I was gonna ask for, and I thought that we could, we had done this by resolution, we were gonna vote on the water line bids, perhaps two weeks from tonight.
Yes, is that correct?
So we could also have a workshop on this.
We could certainly do that.
And then I'll just tell Christina that we need a draft.
Okay.
And it's kind of pushing at the pace, but if that's, maybe that's a good idea.
Well, I think, I think it's time to, time to bring this to resolution, I mean, people, we've had a lot of input from folks, we've tied around, I think we really should be pushing-
So it'll be two weeks from today, you're suggesting?
So it'd be two weeks from today, you're suggesting?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
I think it's the twenty-fourth.
That's, that's a Monday?
To be, Tuesday.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
And to be clear, this is a workshop, which.
Dude, that's right, there's a difference. You're suggesting a workshop, which I agree.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm smiling because of my old, guise is reported, there's no actual animals or workshop. A meeting, some meeting. But yeah, we'll have a meeting, but it'll be a chance for, I think, more interactive public comment.
It was, it was articulated to the members of this board in a communication that we committed, the board, to have a workshop.
Right.
Before a public hearing.
A public hearing, right.
And, and.
But it's a board meeting, it's a board meeting, at any, at any, it's an, it's an official board meeting, needs to be posted, needs to, while it's done, our format can be a more relaxed discussion format, but it's a board meeting. That's really the point.
Agreed.
Okay.
But, but there should be no dispute that this board committed to a workshop allowing the community an inter-exchange with us prior to this board voting in a public hearing.
That's what we're looking to say.
Okay.
That's what we're looking to say.
So can I just be clear, though, then, the formal board meeting that you have that isn't a workshop meeting, you're actually going to vote on, potentially vote on resolution?
That would be the hearing. Like, like what you heard.
That's a public hearing.
Yeah, there would be a public hearing, and.
I don't know if that's a great idea, but.
Right, well, we could, we could.
Do it that night.
Well, I think, given what happens at the public hearing, given what happens at the workshop, given what happens in the public hearing, we could either, we will take information from the public, we'll either say, wow, everybody loves this, we've done such a good job, throwing roses at us. And, and we'll all vote unanimously to, to approve it. Or we'll have some discussion, and we may decide that we're going to turn it down, or we may say, look, given what we've heard, we need to go back and tweak it again, so we carry it over. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, the public hearing would be a pre, my understanding, my, the public hearing would be a prelude to passing a resolution, but does not necessitate it.
No.
No. I, I think.
The workshop.
No, not the workshop, the public hearing.
Okay.
We had, we, we agreed that we have a workshop to continue to mold the document, and then roughly two weeks later, at a public meet, at a regular scheduled board meeting. But I understand your point, that they're all board meetings, but at our next meeting in July, we would be prepared to go to a public hearing on, on the document.
Correct.
Or not, I mean.
Or, or not.
Or not, right. But I think we should schedule it up, and the idea is that the public hearing.
I don't know why we push the pace, I, I mean, but that's just me, I just.
Well.
We have a, we have loads of new stuff in it, so we need to digest it.
If I can comment since I am.
Sure, go right ahead, ma.
It's all right. No, if it is going to be a workshop with some feedback from the public, mostly listening to you and your thoughts, and some feedback coming in, the public hearing potentially could be a vote?
Public hearings are a vote.
Potentially, yes, following a public hearing, there potentially could be a vote.
I mean, not the same day.
Public hearings are for a vote.
Public hearings, no, you could do a public hearing, just, just like we did.
Just like we did tonight.
You were here, just like we did tonight, for the vehicle and the traffic.
It's the same thing, procedural.
So I just want, so then potentially, you could be voting on it at the public meeting. Will you be pushing?
Not, not a public workshop in two weeks.
The public meeting.
The, yes, a regular.
A month, a month from now.
Hearing.
Yes, and are, yes, there are rules, you have to publish everything ten days ahead of time, and all has to be out there.
Thank you, because I wanted to know.
Absolutely.
It's not going to happen in two weeks.
I just wanted to know.
Right.
Does the notice required for, for a public hearing?
It's seven, ten?
Ten days, I have to do the public notice, and the information has to be to the public ten days before the, before the hearing.
Which is hardly any time if, if after the, what?
We're going to have workshop.
If we, if we get the information out, we were doing the logistics, if we get the information out prior to the workshop, the public will have that information more than ten days prior to the hearing.
Right.
Right.
But the document may change.
If it change, if it changes, then.
If it changes, then that hearing cannot be held on the, the next July meeting, because the document would have been changed.
Right.
Gotcha.
So.
Just, may I just clarify one more thing? Because of the way language is being used interchangeably, meaning of, at a workshop, which will be the next step, you would not take a vote?
No.
No, it's correct.
No, 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 right.
Cannot, cannot take a vote.
We couldn't buy, we don't have enough time. Donna, Donna, the language isn't published, it hasn't gone out to the public.
It's been in the newspaper.
It's been, it's been, no, no, our, the draft language of the law hasn't gone out to the public, hasn't had its time, and we couldn't vote on it. All those things have to happen before we take an official vote. So, and all those things will happen.
You have to, you have to call it a public hearing. It's, it has a name, it's a public hearing.
Has a name.
I understand.
Okay, thanks. So.
As soon as I get the information from the board, I will have it in my office, and it'll be published everywhere that I publish my things. It won't be a legal notice, but it'll be available to the public, if the board so wishes.
So going once, going twice, are there any additional public comments at this time? Okay, with that, thank you very much. I would like to close the public hearing, excuse me, the public comment section of this evening's.
Second.
Activities. All in favor?
Aye, sir.
Okay. Any opposed? We'll move on to department reports, and I'd like to start with the treasurer's report.
Good evening. The treasurer's report is for the period ending May thirty-first. The general fund ended the month with four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. The water fund ended the month with three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. And the sewer fund ended the month with five hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. The New York class investments yielded two point two nine percent compounded daily, so we received interest in the general fund of one thousand, five eighty-nine, sixteen, in the water fund of seven, ninety-four, fifty-eight, and in the sewer fund of seven, ninety-four, fifty-two. Vouchers presented for payment, there are two sets of vouchers that were presented for payment. One set of vouchers is for May thirty-first and prior, which are billed to the last fiscal year. In the general fund, those totaled thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. In the water fund, forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. In the sewer fund, seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. And there was a few bills for the water main project totaling eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Our June vouchers presented for payment in the general fund, twenty-seven thousand, five sixty-nine, oh six. In the water fund, six thousand, six seventy-four, forty-four. And in the sewer fund, three thousand, six forty-three, fourteen. An operating statement has been provided with revenue and expenditures through June eleventh, as well as one through May thirty-first for the prior fiscal year. The water and wastewater billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and wastewater department liaisons, and are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the water adjustments as presented?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would like to make a motion to accept the wastewater adjustments as presented this evening.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The, I have a list of budget amendments. The, first I have a transfer of funds request from the fire department account thirty-four, ten, oh two, the fire equipment, to the fire department capital in the amount of thirteen thousand, four sixty-two, and that's for a prior year purchase that we have not yet received. I also like to make a budget amendment to allocate a donation from the Frost grant for tree inventory and management of thirty thousand to the expense account eighty-five, sixty, oh four point one, as well as another Frost donation for a fire department equipment to the expense account thirty-four, ten, oh two. And I'm not going to read all of these, but I have the list of budget amendments to close out the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
I would like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded. And I'm just going to have a comment here in a moment, which is, it's not really true, but it's just real, I thank you to the Frost Foundation, who has come, who's been very generous. The two items, there's a jaws of life that the fire department has purchased or is purchasing?
We're still waiting for them to come in.
Still waiting for them to come in, okay.
That's why we made the event.
Gotcha. And the other one is, a new one, basically, the tree commission asked for and received a grant to do a full inventory of all the trees on village property and in the beyond right-of-way area. And the purpose of this would be to create a survey, create a map and a database of all the trees, and at the same time, also create a three-to-five-year management plan for the village's urban forest. So this is a, it's a first step, actually, in a multi-part process. We'll be training for the software for village employees, and it also dovetails with Trustee Rossi's efforts, because once we have this management plan in place, then we can actually go to the state, who have additional funds available to municipalities with a management plan, to actually do work in and around the village. So the Frost Foundation has been very generous in helping us get this started, leverage it, and also with the jaws of life. So thank you to them. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I have two more items. For the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen year end, I received the prior year data upload from New York State for the annual report, and have started the eighteen, nineteen year end process. Also, as you've all seen, we have an ADA lift going in downstairs. There have been a few unforeseen additional costs to the ADA lift project for air testing, asbestos removal, moving a phone line, and engineering. I am requesting the board authorize an additional forty-five thousand to be allocated from the unreserved fund balance for these changes.
I'll second it. And any discussion?
Well, somebody has to make it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd make a, I'd make, I can't make a motion, okay, I'd make a motion to accept the amendment.
Okay.
Seconded. Thank you. So some discussion, do you guys want to have any discussion about this?
Well, the, the asbestos thing just really hurt us.
Yeah.
That, it's not that we were wildly, you know.
It was unforeseen.
Not understanding what this should cost, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was unforeseen.
It's, yeah, and it, and it did cause, once additional asbestos is found, it causes an additional trip for mediation.
Yeah.
And additional trip to seal it off. And air testing, it just kicks off a whole series of, of issues. So it really did drive some unforeseen costs, which unfortunately, they're going to be about forty-five thousand dollars by the time we're all done. They did a good, they built this building pretty seriously.
Yeah, that's right. That's a way to look at it.
And, and actually, I was going to say that the village employees have been doing their best amid the dust and the noise to continue with their tasks. But that being said, a vote on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Okay. Moving along, we've done wastewater, okay. I have the monthly police report. Oh, and Karen, the audit, the court audit?
Oh, yes. The board wants to authorize the RBT, the same firm that did it last year, to do the current, that is at a cost of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right. And my understanding, this is a mandatory audit?
Well, it's mandatory that you have one.
That we have an audit.
That's correct.
It's, it is seventy-five dollars over budget from what the last one was, or more than.
More than.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize this audit to the cost of two thousand, seven hundred and twenty.
Two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five.
Two hundred and twenty, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is that, got that, that?
I got it.
Okay. So motion, I have a motion.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I'll continue the police report. Okay, this is the May monthly summary as presented. There were a total number of incidents in the town of twenty-seven, total incidents in the village were one hundred and thirty-three, there were nineteen tickets issued in the town, sixty-nine in the village, the total arrests were five, and there were thirteen accidents. The force was out providing extra coverage for the antique car show, the emergency preparedness simulation exercise, the windback valley, windback Hudson Valley full and half marathon, the northeast outdoor show, and the Memorial Day Parade. There was a speed trailer set up at Mill Street at Asher on five-eleven from six a.m. to three p.m. And that was during the Fit Feet Hudson Valley Full and Half Marathon. Eight hundred and seventy-five cars passed by, their average speed was thirty-six miles an hour. There were seven hundred and sixty-four cars above the thirty mile an hour speed limit.
Wow.
But the majority, majority of vehicles traveled between thirty-one and forty miles per hour. There was another speed trailer set up on Chestnut Street on five-twenty-two from eleven a.m. to five p.m. This was a response to some residents making some comments that was there. There were seven hundred and seventy-four cars that passed by, their average speed was eighteen miles an hour. The total vehicles above the speed limit were four, and the majority of vehicles traveled between sixteen and twenty-five miles per hour. So that's the full report. I will say that it's not part of this, but I do see the monthly data that comes back from our electronic signs. And I have to say that they seem to be very effective. I think in the entire month, one car was moving faster than fifty miles an hour on Montgomery Street for the entire, for the entire month, and the vast majority of cars were moving within the speed limit, which is really nice, really nice to see.
Can I just make a comment about the one on Montgomery Street coming into the village? The sign itself was not infaced, but someone made a homemade sign underneath it and put it in the ground, and it said, winning speedy, forty steps, and great big runners, and all decorated, and so forth. So we've got some smart, Alec people that think that's a joke.
Okay, well, it's good to know. Hopefully that was removed as quickly, as quick as possible. You know, if we have to back up those signs with some level of enforcement, then, you know, we may have to. But I got to say, from the statistics, at least, of who's going by, it looks very good. And there's a lot of cars that go through there. We're talking about sixty thousand cars, a lot, a lot of cars.
I'm sorry, I heard you mentioned the Memorial Day Parade, Susanna Reddzy, Manor of Raybeck. There were a lot of cars that drove through the Memorial Day Parade this year, and I just wanted to, you know, compliment the police and the DPW for having the patience to deal with cars that just were surpassing them and driving, I don't, you guys might have already walked by, but there were actually cars that went in to the parade, during the parade.
Okay. That's the first I've heard of it.
Yes. And the officers down on the corner by the Reform Church, the Dutch Reform Church, there were at least three cars that came out, I think of the bank parking lot, and I guess and I guess thought the parade was over, and just drove down the road. So, they had to deal with getting them off the parade route. And I was really impressed with their professionalism and patience, because I worked the bad dash and, you know, had to do the traffic. They don't listen to me as well as the police, but they were much more calm than I get when I'm doing that stuff.
That's good to hear.
I just wanted to make you all so aware, if you didn't know or hadn't heard.
Had not heard that.
But yeah, it was, it was very interesting. It was the first time I'd ever seen that.
First time I met up. I'm unaware of, though, any injury or any...
No, there weren't. Like I said, the police took care of it right away, but it was, it was definitely a new experience for me. I don't know if any of the rest of you saw it, or if you were down by the Dutch Reform, but...
Good to know.
We were in the front of the parade, yeah.
Do you think?
We were in the front.
We were in the front, yeah.
Yeah, you were in the front, you'd already crossed the line.
Missed it, right?
There was like a little gap, and I guess these cars got there, was their chance to drive down or mine.
Okay. I also will present the court report. Tickets that were completed from both court sessions and mailed in for the month, there were two hundred and sixteen. And our revenue from New York State was five thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. That'll close the policing court reports. We have no monthly fire department report, the chief has promised me one that's twice as good every month.
Yes, he has.
Great. So, move on to building, planning and zoning.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So, the monthly fees report for twenty, May twenty nineteen, certificates of occupancy and municipal searches, thirteen hundred dollars in fees, building permits, three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars in fees. There were no fire inspections. There were no planning board escrow fees, excuse me. There were fees and approvals in general for the planning board of eight hundred and fifty dollars, for a grand total in the month of May of five thousand six hundred and five dollars.
Okay, thank you. The Cavell appointment?
Sure. So, as you probably know, our Zoning Board of Appeals Chair, Colton Johnson, had planned to be on leave from June sixth to September seventeenth. Rachel Cavell graciously volunteered to fill in as chair during that period of Colton's absence. And so, I would like to move that Rachel Cavell be actually appointed as interim chair for that period of Mr. Johnson's absence.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, do you have an update on what's happening with the hospital and zoning?
So, as you recall, at the last board meeting, there were present folks from Northern Duchess Hospital, as well as others who commented on progress with regard to a zoning code for the new hospital medical district. At that time, we seemed to reach an impasse on some points that were in the draft code. We also agreed after discussion of the board that we would try again and give ourselves forty-five calendar days. We've actually made, I think, some progress in the sense that there's been some discussions and meetings, and we've redrafted or taken a second look at the draft and added some features to that. That second draft has actually been passed over to Northern Duchess Hospital, and we plan to meet on June nineteenth as a interim step to go over the finer points before any further action is taken in terms of a workshop or any other efforts. So, we're making some progress, and I think we feel pretty comfortable about it.
If I may, trustee Kusjak, we're obviously married to that forty-five calendar day.
Well, we actually came in under the wire, and so we're a little bit, we're a little bit over. But I think because we made progress, we'd like to continue the work, and we actually scheduled something for June nineteenth.
So, we need more than the forty-five days?
We need a little bit more time.
Yeah, good.
You know, the impasse has, I think, been overcome to a certain extent. So, it's progress.
Thank you.
So, also on the agenda was the short-term rental update, which Brent, I thought he gave us. Although I think we do need to set the dates for, for both the workshop session and the public hearing. So, okay, do you want to do that now?
The workshop, I think, we're shooting for two weeks from tonight, right? We could put that on the agenda with the...
With the bids, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's good.
I would hold off on setting the date for the public hearing.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Okay, so set up a meeting, so it'll be on June nineteenth?
I would not do the, the public hearing the night of our monthly board meeting.
Okay.
So, there is a new, you know, what, a new draft that you've worked out, which is great.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last time.
Right, okay.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to have a workshop session of the board on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, beginning at seven PM.
Got it.
That will be on the agenda with the awarding of the bids for, for the water project.
Yeah, we're opening the moment, but it'll be awarding the bid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Deputy mayor, just the, the question will, will be posted to the board. Will we make the latest version, Brent, trustee Nuneck, available to the public prior to the workshop?
Absolutely.
Oh, sure.
Yes, yes. I mean, I think as soon as, I think what Adam said, as soon as she is, something...
You guys may add some, you know, all sorts of new stuff. My, my input is, was to get it to this point.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's gonna circulate amongst us and...
On the public website?
And, yeah, and I would certainly like, you know, to have our comments back prior, maybe, you know, the week prior. So, if we have anything, anything to add, subtract to the, to the...
There's questions for you guys, so definitely requires some feedback.
And I want to thank trustee Nuneck for jumping in and meeting with the attorney.
No problem.
I didn't mean to, trustee Rossi brought up the point of the forty-five days. Do you, do you feel that we need to set another deadline, or are you comfortable?
We did memorialize on the, that was the May second meeting, and we, we did memorialize in those minutes packed, that would be forty-five calendar days, which takes us out, well, today, I think, is day thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Try and work out something, but if you...
I don't know that we need to.
I don't think we need to, but I didn't mean to ignore your comment. But since we've made progress and we continue...
I mean, if, if the committee, the team needs a couple more days beyond the forty-five, that's fine. But for the record, we did, that's what we said, forty-five days.
The deadline got things, but the, the motion on the floor is for the workshop session on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, correct.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the highway department report. And actually, due to John's family, we don't have an official report. However, I did meet with John and Mike Wolf this morning to evaluate bids for the paving of Locust Grove Road. So, we received three bids, you guys have them here, all fine contractors. In our opinion, we thought to award the bid to A. Calaruso &amp; Son for forty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And our thinking here was, basically, this is the best soup-to-nuts bid that we have. Basically, they're gonna come in, we're gonna do some flagging and such as we normally do, but other than that, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna mill the road, mill the road as necessary, fill it, put a tack out down, pave it and clean up. What we want. Karen, do you have a question?
Are you planning to fund this through the village first and then the CHIPS later? Just so I know how we'll get them forward.
Does it make any difference? And let me, and the other question, the other expense that we're looking at this year is reimbursing the town for the paving of Wine Coop Lane. Right now, Wine Coop Lane winds in and out of the village. The town has been planning to pave it, so we said, go ahead, pave our sections, and we'll pay back for the sections that we paid for. Does CHIPS have any restrictions? Does it make any difference?
I mean, just whatever their, their spec is for the paving itself, but I don't know if they have any spec, you know. I don't, I think we paid the town before to help us, and we've submitted for it, so...
So, what's better for it?
I just didn't know if you wanted to use the village part first and then do the CHIPS.
Any cash flow implications?
What?
Any cash flow implications?
No, just, it's just finally, it's just, preparing the paperwork is, you know, for charging it to the CHIPS.
Okay. I say charge of CHIPS, huh?
Okay, so you want to start with that?
Keep our money in our pocket, yeah. Send, send it over to the New York State. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Calaruso &amp; Son for forty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Second?
I need a copy of all the bids.
Okay, I have...
Did John Fenton?
We had, we had a meeting, actually, the three of us had a rather extensive meeting this morning. We all took a look at them, and we thought that this was really the best, the best, the best of the bunch. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
When are they planning to start, did they say?
No. That's...
When are they starting, when they start?
We may have an answer, maybe I'll try to get an answer for the next meeting if I haven't started. Okay, next item on the agenda, the...
Rick, deputy mayor, if, I'm sorry. I don't see park committee report on tonight's agenda, and, and this is perhaps more of a highway issue, so you could indulge me, I wanted to bring this up. And particularly since it was brought to my attention by the highway department. And what I'm concerned about, or what has been expressed to me as a concern, and I've, I've visited it, the, the work that we've been doing up at Legion Park and the paths that we've created, which was to be ADA compliant, that is to say that you could push someone who is wheelchair-bound along those paths. I'm not convinced that you could push a wheelchair. I'm not convinced you could push a stroller along those paths. I'm guessing this has been expressed to, to yourself as well.
So, I can say, we had, in my meeting this morning with John and Mike, this came up.
Oh, good, okay.
I brought those concerns to it.
Thank you.
And so, the, the first issue is that, that is supposed to be an ADA compliant path, and it is supposed to be compacted to a certain level. So, we're gonna have to go out and take a look and see if it's basically out of specification. And if it is, then we're gonna have to figure out how to remediate it. I don't know if that means it has to be repacked, I don't know if it means that another surface has to go down there, but it's too, it's a little too early to tell, but it certainly is on, on the radar for somebody to take a look at. You know, it's a bit of a, you know, maybe somebody should have taken a closer look at it.
Agreed, yeah.
When it was signed off on. Also, you know, did go through a winter now. But yeah, we should, we should take a look at it and make it, it's supposed to be accessible.
Right.
The whole point of the project is to make the part accessible. And if the paths are not functioning, then we need to fix it.
Right, right.
We'll take, we'll get there. That definitely was on the, and our highway department punch list, that was on our punch list.
And, and since I went up to, to look at it, it, it occurred to me that the entranceway into the little path is very narrow. I'm not, I'm not sure that, I think we need to explore whether a wheelchair can properly negotiate through that pretty narrow passage. I can say for certain, a, a double stroller would never pass through, and a large stroller probably wouldn't pass through.
Okay.
Not that I have kids anymore, but...
I mean, you know, all I can say is, we had our, our engineer drop, we're to be ADA compliant.
Yes.
And...
And we received that grant with that, that we would be comporting with ADA requirements. That was the whole purpose of the grant. But, but clearly, now upon examination, I'm not an engineer, I have no expertise, but...
Go check the work.
But it's, I don't think you could ride a bicycle, you know, through it.
Okay. We'll have, we'll have to go, we'll have to go check the work.
Great, no, thank you.
Sure. And I mean, it's, we'd rather see it done right the first time.
Right.
There may be problems.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody, any additional comments here? Okay. So, I'd like to move on to the water part.
Okay. The flood proof for the lower lift station is completed, except for the painting of the basement, which we were gonna do in-house, the epoxy paint, and we're looking at the safety protocols for that. And, you know, the guys are busy, so I'm not sure when we're, when we're gonna get around to it, but it's, you know, the, the walls are just fine the way they are for now. The dredging of the lagoon is continuing, the first two geo-tubes are full, and the guys, Peter Rossi, our contractor, is gonna be pushing the dirt around to create a platform to add the third geo-tube. And that's what the scope of work was for our original project. And we may, we, my, my sense is that we're gonna probably wanna continue and maybe do a fourth bag, but I'll get back to you guys on that. The normal maintenance, mowing, weed whacking, et cetera. We need to clarify the bid opening date, as we said before. I guess we didn't do it properly in our special meeting. We want to reschedule that for seven o'clock, or schedule that bid award for seven o'clock on June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. So, I'd actually like a motion to do that. The bids, the bid submittal date is, when was that?
The nineteenth.
Yeah, the nineteenth. So, we'll, they'll give the engineers a chance to look it over and, and pick the, the best qualified, the lowest qualified bidder, whatever the magic language is in the state statute. So, I'd like a motion to do the bid award on June twenty-fifth nineteen, twenty nineteen at seven o'clock.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, as far as the waterline project, we requested, maybe Karen wants to add something to this, that we, if we could track our clerical time in-house and get compensated for all the extra stuff we're gonna have to do. And indeed, we can, so they're, they actually have a form for it. And they even have a form for professional services, like if we use, you know, someone like John Fenton or something like that for...
Oh, for inspection type of thing?
Not for inspection, but for engineering-type activities. I don't know if he would qualify for that, but if he did, so...
I'll reach out to Aaron, and if, if those forms are available, I'll just use those and follow, follow along and just keep track of, you mean, like when we work with, when we're working with EFC or Bond Council or the...
On that, yeah, on that particular project, yeah.
Because we've already been spending some, I've already been...
It's apparently compensable, I'm sure you have. I know you have, so...
Okay, will do.
So, I marked up the draft for the consolidated consolidation study grant for the Duchess County Water and Wastewater. That's, it's, anyway, I marked that up and submitted it back to them. And, and I did your department, too, or, you know, with Brian Beckham.
Wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, so we've got that, we got the markups back to them, so...
That's great.
Then they would, then the folks at the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority will polish it up, and then that would be the bid docs for the consulting work on the, on the project to analyze the consolidation potential. We talked about submitting a CFA grant request to do a study on the alum sludge removal. That's what we're doing with the lagoon dredging, if there's a better way to capture the sludge before, you know, before it gets into the lagoon, so we don't have to dredge it out every twenty years. We have the right people to do the dredging right now, but who knows what's gonna, you know, what's gonna happen, or what the regulatory framework is gonna be like in twenty years.
Right. We're fortunate we don't have to, we can process that, stuff that comes out as soil, right, or not.
Yeah, it's, no, it's, it's not terrible stuff. Yeah, it's not like, it's not a heavy metal or anything like that. But John came up with this idea to look into something, you know, some things that we could do, at the, some grant requests we could do with the consolidated funding application grants.
Exactly correct.
So, we'll keep you posted on that. We could actually use a TIG, TIG and bond and maybe write this up. I don't know if this is premature, or should I call Brandy or...
Actually, if you could, I...
Or call our municipal engineering company.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna cover a little bit on the, on the grant committee, but in fact, we would need the input of an engineer, just as, just as we do with, when we did the DOT and, and some of the grant activity, which was not successful last year, but we, we absolutely need input of an engineer, because we have to be able to have some ballpark justification, some justification that we're, where we're asking for sixty thousand dollars for, you know, the feasibility study. So, yes, Brent, if you could do that.
Okay.
Great.
I think that's it.
So, from water onto wastewater? What comes in must go out.
A wonderful segue. Wastewater treated four point five million gallons during the month of May two thousand nineteen. That includes twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-four thousand two hundred gallons of sludge and four thousand six hundred and four pounds of, of sludge processed, which is about, I guess, certainly more than a ton. And those are the, the top-line numbers, more details in the reports to everybody. Just a couple of, of items I had discussed that we wanted to respond to the folks, the residents of Wells Manor, who presented to this board in November of two thousand and eighteen with their concerns about odors permeating into their, their facilities and their home. And we... who presented to this board in November of 2018 with their concerns about odors permeating into their facilities and their home. And we visited with them, or I should say, I specifically, at their invitation, met with the residents at Wells Manor on a Sunday afternoon about two weeks ago. And of course, having, like you guys, we've done this for a long time, so I can't make any promises, except the promise that we're gonna keep trying. And I did commit that we, we've already advanced this effort to make a purchase of a type of filtering, and you've heard me talk about the possibility of this odor emanating from permeating out of the sewer where the gardens, I'm sorry, the woods connects with our facilities. And so, there's a low-cost, I say low-cost, under $1,000 solution that might, might really, if not fully resolve this, we just hope begins to mitigate some of the issue. And I spoke with our plant supervisor, Brian Bocomo, and we should have that piece of equipment in-house for installation by before the end of June. And we also, I suggested, and they were receptive, that if a couple of the folks from Wells Manor wanted to visit the plant, as I've done, they were very positive about that. So, we're trying to orchestrate that, because we, we're proud of our plant. And we, you know, we think if they walk through, they'll see just how efficient and certainly, you know, how focused we are on meeting everyone's needs. I was prepared to say that we wanted to make a decision tonight, that I wanted to share on the fix and repairs that are so necessary on the apron, where we caught away the solids. And there was two definite bids, and we got a revised bid from the lower bidder. And it occurred to me that there was rumors of about a third bid, and none of us could put our finger on it. I reached out to our former trustee and our friend, Howie Trout, and sure enough, Howie had a copy of it. And it's actually a very attractive bid. So, we need to now reconsider this before we move forward. I hope that's not too late. And finally, as I'm looking at our treasurer, Karen orchestrated, in her other role, a tour for Brian and I, Brian Bocomo, to the Tri-Muni facility in Wappinger, which is much larger than our facility. And we went there very specifically to see what they've been doing for years now in the way of composting the bio-solids. They're not, they don't pay to have them carted away. They get paid to furnish it to actually compost brokers. So, I'll talk a little bit more about that during the grant committee. And finally, when trustee Nunecker was talking about some of the painting, I wanted the board to know that Brian and the team invested for a couple hundred dollars in some paint, because there were some really areas of the buildings that need to be touched up and painted. And Brian and the team, when they've got a little bit of downtime, which isn't often, they're gonna actually take the brushes and, you know, and make the improvements that we need, the much-needed maintenance, so... That's my report, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like to move on to committee reports. I don't, trustee Ross, you don't see Grant on there. Do you have a grant committee report?
I do, sir.
Okay.
I do.
Excuse me. Can you just make a motion to accept all the reports for the department?
Yes. What I was gonna say is, I'd like to make a motion to accept all the reports, committee reports. There are, there's one with another additional action item inside, so we'll do that one. The appointment format. Matt says one.
No, I'm talking about the department.
Oh, the department, I'm sorry, excuse me, not committee reports. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept all the department reports as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I?
Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, now moving on to committee reports. So, we have reports from the Autism Support Committee, the Tree Committee, the Veterans Committee Report, Emergency Preparedness, the Environmental Committee, and Historian. These are all basically committees that volunteers who are helping the village. I would advise, these are posted.
They're all on the cloud.
They're all on the cloud. I would ask people to go take a look and see what kind of activities are being done. Trustee Ross, if you want to report on grants, you can do that. And then I have a vote on an appointment.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As trustee Nunecker rightfully mentioned just a few moments ago, we're in the window, which is the single biggest grant opportunity for municipalities in any calendar year, Governor Cuomo's Annual Regional Economic Development Council, Consolidated Something Applications. Fund, I should know that, CFA, thank you for... And in fact, Don Warner, who is a member of my committee, the two of us are traveling to Maris tomorrow for a workshop. The filing deadline is the end of July, July 26th. And I've laid out three applications that I, I'd like to, I would like to be able to say to the board that we'll pursue all of them. We can't make that commitment, but that's certainly our intention. And I'll go through them real fast. It would be our desire to pursue feasibility studies. And you might recall, Mayor Bassett suggested that we take a look at, what did Kingston do in terms of their success securing funding for sidewalks and bike paths? And the answer is, they started off with a CFA grant, which was awarded to them in 2018 for $60,000, and it provided the opportunity for them to retain experts, engage professionals that were capable in developing a long-term sidewalk and bike path plan. I think that's what we should do. And then, if we could get the funding, if we get the application in and we get approved, it would be in December of this year. And that would position us much better for the next round, which is biennial every two years, from the Department of Transportation for, you know, a multimillion-dollar grant. I think that that's what we, we really, one of the things that we were most lacking. So, that's the strategy. We'll start with the workshop tomorrow, and hopefully, you know, we'll move in that direction. Where will we, we need some help? Just as Brent mentioned before, we would need some sort of input from the engineers. And, you know, we can talk about that. And I'm looking at both the Deputy Mayor and trustee Korscheck, because I would look for you guys to, if we go in this direction, I'm fairly confident that we will, that you could lend some assistance, just if we find an engineer, maybe it's the same ones. I'm not sure. But we won't be able to do any of these. Brent already described the alum sludge. We'd like to do a feasibility study there. And we would like to, for the wastewater, look into what, in fact, is being done very successfully, not just in Wappinger's, but other wastewater facilities throughout the state and the country. This is very receptive, this would be very receptive to the DEC, moving solid waste into some alternative. And truly, boy, it's something that we need to consider. We pay $2,500 every few weeks to have a ton of solid waste, a ton and a half carted away. Less of these companies are available. It's, if there's a, and make no mistake, this is a four- or five-year initiative, but the right thing for us to begin to look at, we would start with a feasibility study. So, that's my report, Rick, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any, just any comments?
So, oh, just a, I think it's a great idea and wanna support that, so happy to volunteer. All of the grant requests, though, are gonna be for feasibility studies.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
I think that's a lesson that we've, I've learned, I think that we've learned, that it's a better way, you know, we, I think we probably did overreach. I overreached last summer. Don't wanna make that mistake again. I think this is the way to approach it.
Look, I think you did a great job last summer. I think some of the things that you said, commented last time, where there were some contradictions and maybe some guidance from some of the people that were, you know, inclined to inform us. So, no, you know, I think it's a good step. This way, we have an official, formal study that will carry us forward.
And what is our deadline on the CFA?
Uh, July 26th.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So, we'll see how doable that is. Yes. Yeah, it's tight, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ross. I mean, I think that, you know, we're learning how to compete in this world. We've, the village has been successful at times to get some other grants, but we're really kinda upping our game here. And it takes a lot, and there's, as you said, there is a learning curve and some institutional knowledge to learn about how to do these things.
Yeah.
We've got a little swagger, too, from the water line.
Yeah, that's right.
So, so, so...
That's right, trustee. That's right.
Takes hard, takes hard work, volunteers, people to come in and get us...
Yes.
Get us going and that, get us going, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I do have one additional thing, if I can open my, okay. One additional thing that we need to act upon. This is for the Environmental Committee. And this is to appoint Matt Cinchcombe as the Acting Climate Smart Community Coordinator. So, basically, we've been working to get a, our Climate Smart Community Certification. And it's gonna require somebody, basically, to, require somebody to be more focused and ride herd on all the things that need to be done. So, Matt has agreed to do this as a volunteer position, and he will be working with the Environmental Committee and the village. So, I would like to make a motion to appoint Matt Cinchcombe as the Acting Climate Smart Community Coordinator.
Seconded with enthusiasm.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
Deputy Mayor, the only point I just wanna be sure about is that in the write-up that, you know, Mayor Bassett provided to us, Matt would also be representing the town. And I don't, do we have the authority to make a decision that involves the town?
I don't, I don't think we're appointing him to represent the town. I think the town will have to acquire, maybe his list of duties, but that'll be for them to do.
Okay.
And I think the other, the other thing about it is that I think that Matt is going to be in my communication with Gary, that Matt's gonna be kinda defining the job as he goes along.
Okay.
That there's a fair amount, as with the grant process, we're stepping a bit into the unknown. Matt has really agreed to say, I'm gonna take this, take, you know, grab the bull by the horns here and figure out what really needs to be done. So, he's only the acting climate, sorry. So, we have...
No, as trustee Korscheck said, great enthusiasm for Matt. I just wanted to make sure that what we're voting on.
Yeah. Well, I'm just appointing him, I think it's up to the committee to define what his role is. So, we're not defining his role. So, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, go to special requests. And actually, this... Yes?
Did you wanna do trees at all, or?
Uh, there's no, no actionable items right now, so...
I didn't wanna give you extra work.
No, no, it's okay. Just, there's nothing that, they're doing a lot of good, hard work, but there's no action item at the moment. So, special requests. And this is from the American Legion Auxiliary. It is for the Halloween Parade. And I unfortunately have a bunch of questions. And Pat, maybe you can help me here. So, they wanna go from Village Hall to Legion Hall? So, they're going down Route 9?
East Market Street to Route 9.
Legion Street, sorry. So, is this part of the Route 9?
That was my question, yeah.
They're aware, they're aware that they're going to have to apply for the DOT permit.
Okay.
It so happens that the person that applied for it is my daughter.
So, she knows.
So, yeah, she knows, 'cause her mother has told her.
It also explains why this is one of the best applications we've ever seen submitted. Nicely typed and spaced and really...
It was kicked back three times.
So, she knows that she has to apply for the village. She has to get approval from the village before she can apply with DOT.
Okay.
She, yep, she, she has some upcoming health things that will be happening to her, so she wants to get it all done as soon as she can.
Gotcha.
So, so that's where...
Good, okay.
They had briefly discussed changing the route, but the committee decided they, because of the impact on the village and the kids like it to go through the center of town.
Has Sergeant Dunn had a chance to review this?
Yes, he has, and he has no problem.
Okay. So, I would then like to make a motion to approve the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 429 for the Halloween, the 34th Annual Total Halloween Parade. Obviously, we'll approve our end. They're gonna have to work on their Route 9 section. So, a motion to approve.
So, okay. Sorry.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're on to other business, and there are a couple of items here. One which is not on the agenda, which I'll run forward to you too. So, one of the conversations that we've been having here at the board level is, is it time to put our engineering services out to bid? We haven't done it in a couple of years. So, basically, we'd be creating a request for proposal, putting it out, and seeing which engineering firms return services, prices, what they could do, et cetera. I spoke to the mayor. Basically, he has a template that he's worked out, but it needs to be filled in. And he wanted to be able to present that at the next meeting. But it's one of, I think, you guys all think that you feel like this is the right direction to go.
Yeah.
So, basically, it gives us a chance to analyze where we've been, what we're doing, and look at costs.
I think the question is whether it's a request for proposal, whether it's a public bid. And I hope that we can put it in the request for proposal category, 'cause then we can solicit the people we know, know, you know, that we would like to work with, that know us. And I'm sure we could come up with four or five names in five minutes.
Right. And, yeah, it's a good, you know, it's a good question, how category falls on it.
Yeah. Well, we can ask council that, but...
Great. Okay, so moving on. The next item is...
Wait before, just, so where is this at?
The mayor has the template he's working on, and he's gonna bring us...
That's what I have.
That's the, the template, yeah. But it's not completed?
No.
No.
So, then that'll be addressed at the next board meeting?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I have.
Okay. So, the next item concerns the signage for the village. And I do not have the mayor's capacity to make chrom casts. But basically, anybody who's driven to, in and out of the village has noticed that the signs, our signs, are in terrible shape. These are the green signs on the white background. They're dilaminating, the wood is rotting, a woodpecker has attacked one of them. They're just not in good shape at all. So, there was an idea to basically harmonize our village signs with the police sign, create three new signs for the entrances to the village at Montgomery Street and Route 9, at Class and Route 9, and on East Market Street. Those would be entrance signs. And then a new sign here for Village Hall. That would be lit and would essentially be the mirror or the cousin of the police department sign. So, there was a series, I was not involved in this, but there was a series of correspondences back and forth, and timely signs came through with a, I can't show it up in here, with a proposal to do these, total of four signs. Four, let me get the money out here. Four, five thousand something.
Five thousand something.
You got it.
$5,106 after discount.
Thank you. For $5,106. So, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with this. Talk about it after a second.
Sorry. $5,125.60.
Okay. So, I'd like maybe to accept this? If you second it, we can...
Second, yes.
Okay. Second, and now, any discussion about this?
I just wonder if John, I know there's not tons of signmakers, but I wonder if John could get a couple more bids, just to, you know, I mean, I know it's a specialty item, but...
We can certainly ask.
Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Trustee Ross. We can certainly ask. Yeah, I don't, I don't have enough information. We don't say, hey, they're like a sole provider, they only people do it. I don't...
Yeah.
We probably should put it out.
Or maybe we could at least get the backstory.
Right.
Maybe he tried, you know, we make, we, there's language in there. We have to make reasonable efforts to obtain three bids or.
So, I think probably what we should do is, we can defeat the, you know, we can defeat my, my motion here and ask that John Ramondo goes out and gets three additional, or two additional bids for similar work, 'cause we know what we want, and maybe we'll be able to act on this on the 25th.
So, you're amending your motion, okay.
Yeah.
That would be my opinion.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think that's very reasonable. I think we have, I think the issue is that we've had a number of organizations that have volunteered to do the signage, but for whatever reasons, they've been unable to. They're looking pretty ratty. We should do something.
I tried to get my daughter interested in it with Girl Scouts, and she dropped it.
Oh, goodness. Make it happen.
Have we had some community input on the signage? I would feel better if we made the change out of the signs, which clearly.
The old ones.
Yeah, the evidence is compelling for the change needs to take place. But, you know, once we get the signage up and people don't like it, you know.
You know, you know what we've done in the past with that, like historic structure sign across the street? We punted to the planning board for advice on aesthetics, because that's.
That's a really good thought.
So, we can give this scheme to them and say, what do you think? You know, it matches the, the idea was to match the police station.
Match the police station, so we have.
I like that, but I'm not, I don't have any visual skills.
Is that the exact color match or was that?
They have timely signs for the folks. So, I'd like, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call for a vote on the motion, which we.
To obtain two additional bids?
Well, no, I was gonna, on the vote to accept it, I was gonna not accept the bid and then say, we're gonna vote into the next part. Do it in two bits.
Well, you have a motion. It was seconded, so you can amend the motion. You can do all that without a vote.
Okay.
So, you can.
All right. So, let's clean out this whole, let's clean out the first vote. So, I'd like to take a vote on the motion to accept the bid. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Yay. Okay, motion does not carry. I would like to make a motion that we consult with the planning board, the aesthetics for this sign, and also investigate going through the regular procurement process. This looks like it's above $5,000. So, we would like to see at least two additional bids.
Seconded that motion.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
If reasonably possible, that he can, I don't want John to knock himself out. If he can't really find two other people.
It's a good fact.
Good faith.
These are, these are, these are all.
That John would make a good.
Get the shot in the planning board, and meanwhile, they have some ideas too.
It's all this. So, would you bring these down to the planning board?
Sure.
Okay. So, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. This is not on the agenda, but it kind of, I was over at Town Hall yesterday. And I had a chance to see this rather lovely glossy pamphlet that's been developed by the people who are developing Grassmere Farm.
Oh.
We now have a copy. I got a copy. We can put it up on the, it's up for us. And I think, Pat, is it, did you put it on the web as well? On our website?
No, I sent the link to the trustee.
Okay. So, basically, I think as Trustee Rossi knows, this is a proposal for a rather large inn and spa boutique hotel restaurant and spa. We're looking at Phase 2B. There would be 12 manor house suites, 16 walled garden rooms, 20 treehouses, eight studios, 10 large studios, 10 family cabins, and 32 yurts. So, the issue, and this is all taking place, by the way, in the town, not, where does not, is outside of our jurisdiction. But the issue for us is that they wanna tap into our sewer line, as you discussed. The other issue is that they're gonna wanna have to upgrade our water service. They're gonna have to upgrade the water service that's coming.
Well, they would need to just get to good pipe, you know, the pipe that'll serve, you know, if they have to come all the way to Astro Home or whatever. I'm just, I threw that out there. I don't know what.
Gotcha. So.
Yeah, until they come to the.
But I think, I think the point is that we're gonna need engineer, we need some engineers on our end to look at this. I brought this up last, last meeting, but I would like to really reinforce it. I think that as a condition of our doing this, they should create a lighted all-weather pathway between their facility and the center of the village. And I say this because there's a lot of people, and it's a lot of, lot of cars. And if all these people are gonna drive in and out of the village, it's gonna, it's not good. It's on, Terry, it's a little bit of a walk, but it's a pleasant walk. So, I would really like to see, we've been talking about improving the walkability of the village. I think this is an opportunity that we should take to say, look, you're, you're coming in our village, you're using our facilities. This is important for the integration within, within the village and within our plans for the village.
Is it possible also to think in terms of a bikeway or something like that as part of that?
We could add that, certainly. So, I wanted, I wanted to bring a couple of movement components. Trustee Rossi's already started working on the wastewater situation. I think we have to look at the freshwater situation. And then I'm talking about adding this additional, this additional.
I would like it to just improve the bikeways, bike paths, if that's possible.
I think it is a question of where, how far they have to go with it, you know, they might.
Well, I think.
To the first walkable sidewalk or.
Well, I think that, yeah, I mean, I mean, in a way, we might wanna engage some engineers or some folks to look at that, think about where it comes from. I don't, you know, I would personally prefer to see it on the west side of Route 9, go by Astro Home. But that could be some tough engineering. They may wanna say, look, we're gonna create a crosswalk, and people will cross, and they'll go on the east side by Legion Park. That's all, it's all acceptable. I guess that would kind of include a bike path. Or maybe they will create something that, you know, goes around cemetery and up. I don't, I don't know. I would leave it up to them to create something that is gonna be all-weather, lighted path. And it would be available both for their, for their clients and for us. I think that's.
I, I wanna say that I appreciate, Deputy Mayor, your entrepreneurship and your, your outlook, your, for things that are very important to the village and our objectives. But I'm a little uncomfortable. You're right when you say you're using our services, but we do have to recognize that they're paying for those services. They are customers. And I'm, I'm, I just have to get more comfortable personally with the idea that we're prevailing upon a customer that we want something above and beyond what we would normally expect from customers. And it's just a, it's just a little level of discomfort I have. It seems, I don't know, it strikes it sort of like a quid pro quo. And I, there's just an element of it at this moment that I'm not completely comfortable with.
Well, there's different, there are different issues within that. You know, there's water. There's, obviously, they have to engineer the plumbing to be adequate. So, we're not gonna upgrade a pipe to get to them, I wouldn't think. Wastewater, if it's as many units as he suggests, we probably will have to either renovate the plant, or we have to make the plant larger.
Yes.
We have a history of doing this with the gardens, and they actually paid.
Okay.
The idea was for them to pay for the.
Right. I think that.
For the plant expansion.
Right. I think that any rate, though, you know, they, it's on their dime to expand the plant, to put in the infrastructure.
Agreed, yes.
But I do think that this is a development with enough impact on the village that I think it's very reasonable for us to act.
I think the argument might be, Trustee Rossi, is that we have really no capacity for additional vehicles in the village. And it's an issue. We have really no additional municipal parking, and certainly, there's a lot of, you know, on-street parking that's already taken up, limited, and whatever. And it's, I guess what I'm trying to do is draw a parallel. It's like, well, you're gonna have to expand the water plant or the sewage plant, and you're gonna have to pay for that because we don't have the capacity. In a certain sense, we're saying, I think, I think what Trustee, little is saying, well, we don't really have capacity for a lot of cars. And if, you know, you're bringing on a huge influx of people that might wanna drive, you know, we'd just like you to consider, you know, accommodating that capacity the way you'd accommodate the capacity for water or sewer or anything else. And that would be part of, I guess, a folding your plans into basically the limitations of our community.
Well, we're making a case that we want to litigate, which is, this is, is good for us, and we're, we're manufacturing, I think, reasons. They may be very legitimate reasons, but in terms of the infrastructure upgrades for water and sewage, they would pay for that. They would pay us.
I guess what I'm saying is that we're, I'm suggesting that we just expand what we consider as part of our infrastructure. So, it's typically, you know, water, sewer, even electric. But part of our infrastructure is transportation, mobility. And, you know, you can't squeeze so many cars into a fixed space. It's just.
But where, where are we, where are we squeezing the cars?
That's the point. That's the point. If they're gonna be generating more traffic.
They're gonna be generating more traffic coming through the village and coming into the village.
So, do we know that, do we, do that, know that factually or anecdotally?
Well, I think it's a given if you're gonna have that large development somewhere. Cars are gonna come from somewhere. And the tendency with most folks is to try and park. I'm just trying to say that what we should consider infrastructure is not just typical utilities, but, you know, from an environmental standpoint, it's mobility, it's transportation.
We want to build that case. We, I think we have to build that case factually and not, well, we think it's likely, it's probable.
Okay. Well, we can certainly ask the Grassmere people about it.
Linda, is it?
Don't we have a checklist when you have any kind of change that's that massive, which sounds pretty massive to me, as to the impacts in the village, whether it is automobile, traffic, parking, whatever? We shouldn't just kind of do what we really knew. We should have a plan going forward. When you have that, what are the impacts? You could have them have shuttles or, or car service or whatever. I mean, I'm not saying that that's the answer. I'm just saying.
I think, I think, Linda, I think you bring up a really good point. And this is, and, you know, if this were wholly within the village, then it would be really straightforward.
They're going through the planning board across the street, and there, those, these questions are being asked, but we also need to, a little, we need a seat at the table.
That's, I think, I think Brandon is exactly right. And so, I think one of the things that we need to do here is work more effectively with the town so that they're not just looking at the town point of view, but they're looking at it from a village point of view. And I do think, especially with something this size, this close, it needs to be taken very seriously.
That's a fair statement, yes.
I mean, I, and I think that we need to have, as Brandon said, I think we need to have a seat at the table. The impacts to the village center are a lot. I mean, I would ask the question, wouldn't it have been nice if the gardens had constructed a sidewalk from the gardens to the village center? And certainly, people are asking for it all the time.
Well, if you look at the.
And you see people walking on the roads.
I don't know, did the woods have to do that sidewalk going?
They, they.
Going to the hospital?
It's theirs.
It's theirs.
Right.
But the other thing, Winnicke, I'm pretty sure it was Winnicke, came to the village board a couple of months ago and discussed the walkways and paths that they were going to do. And they're going to be connecting Mill Road and going behind and going through the cemetery and coming into the village. So, that's also a walkway that's going to be, I don't know where that is with, in their development part, but they had come and discussed it.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Good point.
And if it's, if it's lit, and, and, that would be great. But I, I mean, I, I, I think what, what Trustee Korchak is really suggesting is that our parking is, in a way, a resource, just as much as our water and our, and our sewage treatment plant. And we need to both husband it and, and it has, it has a value and a cost. And I do see this as an opportunity for us to kind of tie with the town planning board a little bit better.
Coordinate.
Yeah, to coordinate. 'Cause this is really, you're right. If, if, I mean, this has been percolating for two and a half years.
Oh, I think longer.
And I, I.
It's, I went on a tour over there for this four or five years.
Four or five years ago, okay. So, and I even know that there's an additional, when I spoke to Gretchen over at the town planning department, she's expecting an additional revision to this plan as well. So, we're not even at the final, the final, final. But I do think we have to get involved. And I will, I guess I will take it upon myself to look into the ins and the outs of adding additional covenants. You know, it's called, we'll speak to Nikon and some other folks about adding additional covenants to this kind of thing. I think, I do, I, I mean, I really would like to do it because I just think that, as Trustee Korchak, Korchak said.
And Trustee Rossi made a very good point. I'm sure there's a plan and some projection as to the number of cars, where there's two cars for whatever. And all I'm saying is, we should access that. And, you know, those cars are gonna go somewhere, and I'm sure they've got a number.
You know, and I think, if you're familiar with the planning process, there's the SEACR statement, you know, for, which is the environmental impact.
Right.
And really, somebody should call us, 'cause so, we're gonna bear a pretty good brunt of this, of some of the impact of this, this institution.
Paul, is there, is there still a CAB for the Conservation Advisory Board for the town?
Brian is on it.
Okay. So, they're gonna study a lot of those environmental impacts. And at one point, we were, we had some cross-members, where you had some village members and some village appointment.
I don't know who the members are, but I know.
But we don't appoint anymore?
I don't think so.
I thought we did at one point.
I just know one of our employees is on it.
Right.
Again, I appreciate the entrepreneurship. I'm just not.
You know what?
Not ready to ask someone to write out a check.
Yeah, that's right. You know, you're asking questions. I think, you know, they certainly do some answers. But I do think we do have to realize that this thing is here, and it's, it's gathered a lot of momentum. And, you know, among the issues that we have is, they need to, first of all, they're gonna, they're gonna pay for all of this. So, they're gonna pay for the engineering. They're gonna pay our programming studies.
Yes.
We have to make sure that they bonded or put down a letter of credit.
Escrow and, yeah.
Escrow, the whole thing. So, there's, there's a lot. So, we're gonna need the engineers. We're gonna need legal on this.
So, in the meantime, I'm gonna look up the code for the, for developments through the, you know, in the water and wastewater and how that's treated under our code.
Great.
There, it doesn't always dovetail well with what the planning board's doing, you know, as far as tapping in.
Right.
So, I'll just look into that preliminarily and email you guys, so.
Our code is based upon the village, you know, it's all, but even if it's in the town, it has to apply. Do you follow me?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I do think we need to really make sure both of our eyes, I mean, you, you brought this to us initially with the wastewater, and suddenly, we're realizing there's.
Yes, there's a lot here.
There's a lot, there's a lot of things to do. So, thank you. I guess we'll try to make some reports on this next month.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
And Pat, I'll pull the agreement we have with the gardens, 'cause we had, we did an agreement with them about 10 years ago.
Yep, I remember. Pat, every time they, they couldn't get their C up until they came in and paid a certain amount every time. Yeah, 'cause I was very involved in that.
Okay.
Rick, thanks for pulling that.
Sure, sure. And I think, and now we all have an electronic edition of this, and I will do my best to keep on whatever change is going. And I think we also, I also think we owe it to the developer to let them know that this is, I don't wanna blind send them, but this is what we're thinking. That this is part of, part of what we're out there. So, any other new, any other business here? Other business here? Anybody else?
No.
So, I'd like to move on to the minutes approval.
I have one item on the five, nine minutes. I'm sorry, is it?
Go ahead.
Pat, just on page three.
I didn't do the, I think, is that the minutes that I, that were submitted by Karen?
I think you did these.
'Cause I saw your email.
Pat, you were present, yeah. This is the May 9th. Present was village clerk Patricia Kuhn.
Okay. 'Cause I didn't see an email on that one, so that's why I.
Yeah, because it's just one little tiny item. On page three, the second-to-last paragraph, starting with the word "the board", in fact, it's the last sentence, "Trustee Nunica discussed the." it's the last sentence, trustee Nunica discussed the phase, phase one, it should be OF, not OPF, it's just, just a minor typo.
Okay.
Let me just get started.
So should be just OF?
Yeah.
I can correct that, that's-
Yeah. I, I mean, everything else, perfect. I mean, it's just textbook how it should be done. Really textbook.
So, do you wanna make a motion to accept, Brant, now?
Well, on the June third minute, I, I just noticed that, um, this was the special meeting with the, last Sunday. Brant was, was, was present, it was Rick that was absent.
Oh, I had, I had it reversed.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was there.
I don't think you luck a lot.
The other set of minutes, I actually did forward to Karen, that was the meeting that she covered, that the last month's meeting. Understanding it was a draft, but-
Sure.
There were, you know, enough typos that I just thought, I mean, misspelling, so I sent it to her, I said, you know-
I had corrected some of them before, after.
Oh, okay, so you did, yeah, so we saw, I'm sorry.
I saw some of them.
Okay.
But I don't know if I caught them all, and then there was one paragraph that you had-
Yeah.
And I wasn't present, so I didn't know what that was about.
Yeah, yeah, so I, it was actually a comment that Donna had made, you know, and she said it was forty, the number, but it showed up as forty percent.
Okay.
So, and it's completely distorted, so, but I had that to her as well, so.
So, and what, is that date on here?
Yeah, that was the five fourteen.
So did you wanna make the motion to accept the five nineteen and the six three minutes?
Five nine, six three.
That's it.
I think we can accept them all.
With the corrections.
With the corrections, Deputy Mayor, yeah.
So you make mine.
I make a motion that the board accept the three sets of minutes as presented here